I'm getting my PhD.
We call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who is in attendance tonight and also those that are viewing the meeting on G10 television. We will begin our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Jerry Bittner, followed by the invocation by our city attorney, John Carter. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this beautiful day, to give you thanks for the blessings that you so graciously bestow upon our city and upon each of us individually. We especially give thanks for all of our city employees who work each and every day to be of service to our city and its citizens. And it's always with a sad heart that we have to lose some of those employees. And tonight, we mourn the loss of Al Alvarez. We give thanks for his service to the city, and we pray for his family during this time of their loss. We pray for our service members who are serving us here and around the world, for their anxious families, and we pray for their safety and care. And as always, we pray for our mayor and our council, that your guidance and your direction would always be with them. All this, we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, you all have been provided with a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item number seven, which is the FY14 and 15 Fee Schedule Amendment for Planning, Permitting, and Inspection Fees from the general, from the consent agenda to the non-consent agenda for discussion. Also, we'd like to amend item number eight as presented at our tables tonight and delete item number 10 in our old business, which is the rezoning of 202 and 204 Sunset Road since the rezoning petition has been withdrawn.
Second. Have a motion, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We got to wait till we get to... If there's anyone who is here regarding this item number 10, which was the Sunset acre rezoning request, if you came tonight, there's, just want to inform you that that petition has been pulled by the petitioner, so that will not be appearing on the calendar for tonight, just to let you know, in case you showed up to speak at a public hearing or for that one item, that will not, that's off the table. The home holiday decorating contest is an initiative of the Jacksonville Environmental and Apairance Commission, or Committee, to encourage city residents to show off their community pride and light up the city. It is meant, also meant to be a fun family activity. Tonight, we are giving an award for the outstanding home decorations for Christmas, and I've asked Councilmember Angela Washington to join me up front here since she is the council liaison to the Clean and Green, or, I'm sorry, the Environmental and Apairance Advisory Committee. Also, this time, I'm going to ask Tim Early, Tim here. Tim, if you and your family, Danny Smith, Victor Case, and Pastor Mike Schwalm, come forward. Okay. I didn't know you were that old. I'm just kidding. Victor knows I'm picking on you. The home of Mr. Tim Early and his family at 1010 Vernon Drive was the overwhelming winner, overwhelming winner of the holiday home decorating contest by the committee and the public. Their home in Northwoods area featured a whimsical Christmas music and light show. In addition to his family, Mr. Early was assisted by Danny Smith, Victor Case, and Pastor Mike Schwalm from the Center, Centerview Baptist Church in setting up the display. And I want to congratulate you on a job well done and beautifying, there's, there we are on the screen there, beautifying and lifting the spirit of Christmas in our community. Thank you, Tim, appreciate it.
On behalf of the Environmental and Apairance and Advisory Committee, I present to you the Clean and Green Jacksonville Star Award. The Clean and Green Jacksonville 2014 inaugural holiday decorating award is presented to Mr. Tim Early and his family and friends for exceptional Christmas decorating efforts at their home, which benefits the Clean and Green program of the city of Jacksonville presented on this day, February 3, 2015, before the Jacksonville City Council. So here is your award.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome, congratulations. And here is your winner award, so that you may post out in front of your home.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Yes, please come up, say something if you want.
I guess it was a lot of hard work, I can tell you that. But it was just a wonderful opportunity to bring something to the community, especially as, as you see Pastor Mike Schwalm from Centerview, he's truly helped me with mixing into the commercial side of Christmas as we talk about the birth of Jesus Christ. He did our Talking Nativity and, and our manger scene as he presented the whole story of baby Jesus or the birth of Christ Jesus. But it was a wonderful opportunity to, to see the community come out. I think we had, had three nights when we had Santa there, and we had over 600 children,
I have one person that has signed up, and that would be Chip Dodd from Waste Management.
and it was a blessing to hear those children go to the manger as, as well as seeing the other nativity scenes mixed throughout our display as they talked about Christ Jesus.
Ms. Dodd.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council.
So, so we thank you for this so much, and thank you for the opportunity and the award.
My name is Chip Dodd, and I work for Waste Management, and my address is 10411 Globe
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Road, Marsville, North Carolina, 27560. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and I just want to make a few brief comments on your commercial garbage collection. Believe me, Waste Management understands your plight, and we would very much like to help you resolve your issues. I would like to ask for the opportunity for Waste Management representatives to meet with your manager and your staff and to discuss the situation and possibly consider negotiation of a contract. Waste Management was the low bid in a bidding process just one year ago, and our proposal is still viable. We believe that we can help you reduce your deficit and your liabilities. We have some ideas and thoughts that we'd like to share with you. We would be interested in purchasing the equipment that you have bought to provide the commercial service, and if you would prefer, we would just help you sell it, if that would be of assistance. If you have employees that would be displaced, if you went out the contract, we would be very interested in, in looking at qualified employees. We're always interested in hiring qualified drivers. You recall, I'm sure, the survey that the city did about a year ago, and it was noted in the survey that your commercial service was satisfactory. Now, we, we do recognize that there were some specific issues, and we have made improvements to our operation in Jacksonville, and we believe that we can offer you excellent customer service. And we are agreeable to putting guarantees in a contract. I just would like to note that we're very proud of our safety record in the Jacksonville operation. For three years straight in our commercial line of business, we've had no injuries. In concluding, I just would like to again encourage you to, to have a meeting with us to discuss some options on resolving your situation. We very much would like to help you. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd.
Thank you.
Always nice to see you. Thanks, thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and go down to the, what, I think I'm going to take a quick breather here for a minute. I know there's folks here that probably came for presentations or for other reasons and don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, so I'm going to take a quick, quick pause here and allow you the opportunity to leave if you want to, but you're welcome to stay. So now, we're going to go to item number 11 on the agenda, and, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to do the adoption of the consent items. I'm still trying to get used to this new format here.
Minutes, that's right, minutes.
Oh, my gosh, we need to adopt the minutes, approve the minutes, don't we? Let's do the minutes then. How about that?
Here, I'll make a motion to approve the January 6, 2015 special meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, then, we're going to do the adoption of the consent items, okay? How's that?
Make a motion that we approve the consent items as amended.
As amended, okay.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to take a moment and make a little change here. And just like that, we have a new seal, newly approved.
I didn't do it.
I'm hoping the staff has researched that. I'm sure not. Okay, next, we're going to go to item number 11. This is a public hearing on voluntary annexation petition on the Harry Brown Family LLC's 17.26 acres on Marine Boulevard, and Mr. Massey is going to be presenting this item. And give me just a second here. Okay, Mr. Massey.
Mayor, council, this voluntary annexation petition is received from John L. Pearson Associates on behalf of the Harry C. Brown family for a 17.26 acre parcel that is contiguous to the current city of the founders. The tract is located along US Highway 17 north, near its intersection with Drummer-Kellum Road and directly across from Stevenson Toyota. Development plans are eventually to locate from two to seven commercial businesses on the site, including a future 22,000 square feet Gerber Automotive Repair Facility and an enterprise rental car center. The financial analysis shows a negative cash flow over a five-year review period. That cash flow is about minus $97,000, and one of the main reasons is because it only assumes the initial development of those two facilities, and there's still additional lots to be developed. The staff recommends council adopt the annexation ordinance as presented.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Massey? Thank you, Ron.
Where's the connectivity to the city boundary?
It's, it's right across street from Stevenson Toyota on Highway 17 north.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Massey. We're, we are required to have a public hearing in this matter, and this time, I recessed the regular council meeting and opened a public hearing. Is there anyone wishes to speak in regards to this matter? Mr. Pierce, did you want to speak on behalf of your client?
I don't have to in this one, but I'm going to tell the truth anyhow. I'm just here on behalf of Harry Brown, and as I alluded to Dr. Woodruff, we, we know we've got two proposed uses, but I would envision in the near future, with the development of that, there'll be some more coming up, you know, once you get a new development, you get the sewer line run to it and water put in. The way the town's going in that area, it's just an opportunity for a lot of other similar type businesses to locate there, and I'm just here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Pierce?
Well, good, that was brief.
That's easy.
That's easy.
Again, anyone present wishes to speak to this matter? All right, close the public hearing and reconvene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the annexation ordinance. Food for adoption?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda item number 12, this is a public hearing, a special use permit and type 3 site plan for Le June Collision Repair Center at 616 Belle Fort Road. Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item, and this is a quasi judicial matter, so I will have you swear, you swear that the information you're about to give us is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have a four-year special use permit and site plan application for Le June Collision Repair Center submitted by Jerry at Stephen Properties LLC. There's the vicinity map before you at 616 Belle Fort Road. This is aerial photography of the site. Subject property is zoned corridor commercial. Across Belle Fort Road, a property is zoned industrial use for the animal house, pet daycare and grooming facility, and office, offices in a church site. Adjacent properties are zoned to the south and to the northwest, zoned corridor commercial and used for auto service centers. Le June Automotive to the south and Smith Auto Service Center to the northwest. This is the zoning of the site, just to show you again, the south of Belle Fort Road is all zoned corridor commercial, to the north is industrial. The application is to operate a paint and body shop, which under the new EDO adopted last year is a special use in the corridor commercial zoning district, and that's why you're seeing this project before you tonight. Before you on the screen is the site plan. The 1.65 acre site currently has 9,500, 256 square feet that is proposed for the automotive paint and body shop. This is a reduction of the current square footage by 1,380 feet. They are not proposing any new square footage. It is a redevelopment site. The planning advisory board heard this case at their January 12 meeting this year. They, along with staff, are recommending approval of this site with findings of fact A, B, D, E, F, and G being found in the affirmative. Finding of fact C will be in the affirmative if staff is directed to update the camera landing plan. Mr. John Pierce represents the applicant, and he, along with staff, would be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this application and site plan.
In recess of the regular session. Any questions of...
You need to swear, Jeremy, Mayor, special use requires a swear.
He was sworn in.
Okay.
Any questions of Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes, sir. I don't know. We could have done it then and not had to do it now, maybe. You swear to tell the information you're about to give us is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you.
I just want to point out that I don't think, you probably got a whole lot of questions, but it's been reviewed and met the ordinance, planning board recommended approval, and staff's recommended approval, and I think it's an opportunity that we can take some older buildings, dilapidate it and upfit them and make them standardized, in fact, we're reducing the area, and I just think it had to dress up, help dress up the, I think it's good for the whole Belle Fort corridor to upgrade some buildings and make them, refurbish them, make, make them new looking. And I'd like to answer any other questions you may have, but I just think it's hope, it's positive for the whole area.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Pierce?
Another short one, I like it.
Going good for you tonight, isn't it? Is there anyone else present that wishes to speak to this matter, public hearing? Thank you. So, we'll recess the public hearing now, and Counsel, you're being asked to consider the special use permit and site plan.
Mayor Phillips, I'll make the motion to approve the special use permit and site plans with the findings of facts A, B, D, E, F, G being found in the affirmative. Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is agenda item number 13.
Mr. Pierce, will you take that last motion to direct staff also to bring, comply with the camera plan?
Yes, thank you.
Please include that. All right, this is a commercial dumpster collection service fee schedule update amendment, and Wally Hanson, Public Services Director, will be handling this matter.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Before you tonight, we have a consideration on a deschedule amendment for commercial dumpster collection. If you'll recall, at your January 20th workshop, staff gave a mid-year update on commercial dumpster collection. Thank you, Glenn. As we discussed, the city guided to the commercial dumpster service in January...
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Pierce?
Another short one, I like it.
Yeah. Going good for you tonight, isn't it? Is there anyone else present that wishes to speak to this matter, public hearing? Okay, thank you. So, we'll recess the public hearing now. And Counsel, you're being asked to consider the special use permit and site plan.
Mayor Phillips, I make the motion to approve the special use permit and site plans with the findings of facts A, B, D, E, F, G being found in the affirmative.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is agenda item number 13.
Mr. Pierce, we'll take that last motion to direct staff also to bring it and comply to the camera plan.
Yes, thank you.
Please include that. This is a commercial dumpster collection service fee schedule update amendment. Wally Hanson, Public Services Director, will be handling this matter.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before you tonight, we have a consideration on a fee schedule amendment for commercial dumpster collection. If you'll recall, at your January 20th workshop, staff gave a mid-year update on commercial dumpster collection. Thank you, Glenn. As we discussed, the city got into the commercial dumpster service on January 1st. The service was intended to be a separate self-supported fund based on user groups. We hired five sanitation drivers, a heavy truck mechanic to provide the service. We purchased five front-end trucks, one container delivery truck, and seventy-five dumpsters. Sixty of those were recycling containers, and fifteen were for rental purposes. You saw this table also at your January meeting. It gives you a snapshot of where we started at the beginning of the year related to customers and accounts, and it gives you where we were as of December midway through the year. As you can see, we added about fifteen accounts and approximately one hundred and eleven collections per week. And we have also beginning, began renting those dumpster containers. This slide was also at your January workshop. It gives you a snapshot of where we were midway through the year related to revenues. And as you can see, the revenues were just slightly above what we anticipated, so we were on track for revenues. Unfortunately, with expenditures, this slide shows where we've had some significant problems. We talked about those in pretty great detail at that January 20th meeting. But most notably, you can see that those were in overtime, the fleet, and fuel. These issues were related primarily to unanticipated vehicle maintenance and cost. Some of that was because we purchased used vehicles, and they were not as in good of shape as we had anticipated, so we did spend some money there. One thing that we were not prepared for was the cost of tires associated with those vehicles. We get a lot longer life out of the tires on our residential trucks, our residential collection trucks than we do on the commercial front-end loaders. We had some unforeseen circumstances, unfortunately. We wrecked a vehicle that was totaled. We also had a worker's comp claim related to that incident. And we also had a blown motor on, in one of the vehicles. And that is something that we had not experienced before in any of our residential trucks. We also were over on our estimate of fuel usage, and we did not plan for overtime cost. At that meeting, we also prevented an action, presented an action plan. Those included a monthly review by the city manager's office in written format. We are at the end of January, and Yale has begun to pull those numbers, so you will have that report shortly. We revisited our Saturday pickup rate and our other rates and level of service, and that's what we're here before you tonight to discuss. And in addition, we have also looked at our routes for efficiencies, and we continue to do so. And I'll just, I'll give an example of that a little bit later on. And then, we are working on preparing bid documents. So, on the item before you tonight for consideration, we have proposed fee changes. As Ms. Stod stated, the lowest bid was for $5.99 from the private sector. That was about thirty-seven cent above what the city's estimated bid and, or sorry, estimated cost. And we also looked at what would happen if we went to that $5.99. So, before you, we've proposed a rate of $6, which is one penny over the $5.99. The reason that we did that is so that the numbers basically came out clean, which is shown in the table below. This is an excerpt from the fee schedule amendment that's presented to you tonight. It covers about eighty-eight percent of our customers. So, you can see that the majority of those have two-time-a-week pickup, and that covers approximately seventy-six percent of our customers. And then, we have three-time-a-week pickup for eight cubic yard, which is another twelve percent. Those fees, the $6 would take those fees for a two-time-a-week, two-cubic-yard pickup, which is our minimum service, from seventy-five dollars and eighty cents a month to seventy-nine dollars a month. The $5.99 to $6 difference works out to be, it would've been seventy-eight dollars and ninety-two cent or ninety-three cent or something. So, that's why we propose $6 instead of the $5.99. We are also proposing changes to additional collection. The additional collection is anything that is not a regular stop or a regular pickup. And what we found was that the call for additional pickups is not excessive. We do not have a lot of calls for additional pickups. But when we do, especially if they come on a Friday or a Monday, it is difficult to work those into the route. Sometimes you may have a truck in the area, but because of the route, it may, it's planned for that vehicle, it may be overloaded, or it may not be able to take that stop, so we have to send another truck. So, we've proposed moving to a flat fee for those instead of, there was a formula that was in the fee schedule that was a little bit difficult to understand, but we've proposed a flat fee for those. For Saturday service, we really did not increase the amount of the pickup. What we did do is make the table a little bit easier to understand, and we extended into four and six cubic yard, which previously we didn't offer service to. And what we did say is those needed to have a minimum pickup equal to that of eight cubic yard twice a week, which is sixteen total cubic yards. So, that's why we said a minimum of four cubic yards, sorry, a minimum of four-day service for a four cubic yard dumpster and a minimum of three-day service for a six cubic yard. So, that would be a weekday. So, they would have, if you have a four cubic yard pickup, it would be four weekdays plus a Saturday. And then, for vertical compactors, for those not familiar with what a vertical compactor is, it is essentially a dumpster that is serviced by a front-end loader, but it packs essentially three to one. So, a two-cubic-yard vertical compactor compacts six cubic yards, essentially. And that's what our fee is based on. We are also proposing changes to our monthly dumpster rentals. What we had was our fees were based on a rate of return of some, somewhere between eighteen and twenty-four months, and now, depending on the vendor and where we purchase them from, we would be in the twelve to eighteen-month range. So, you can see that the fees range from two to eight cubic yards, and that would be, it would range from thirty to sixty dollars. So, our next steps are to continue working on the bid documents. We are in process, we've met several times, with myself and sanitation and finance and Dr. Woodruff to discuss the bid documents. We are, I believe you received an email from Dr. Woodruff about putting together a commercial dumpster user group. We are planning to continue evaluating and implementing route changes, and we are looking to rebid, to consider privatization, privatization, once we have those bid documents. And in light of Ms. Stod's presentation to you earlier, obviously scheduled meeting with Ms. Stod, Ms. Stod's to talk about all of our options. With that, we'll turn it over to you for any questions and for consideration.
I have a question.
Yes.
You proposed changes for Saturday pickup.
Yes, sir.
Everything else, you had the old and the new. Can you tell me what the?
The?
Can you flip that back?
Sure.
And show me? I missed it or something?
The reason I did not put the old and the new is because if you look in the attachment that says attached to your agenda item, it was a table. If you do the math backwards in the table, it is essentially a hundred and fifty dollars. We did not propose a rate increase. So, while, we proposed a new table because it's easier to understand, and then, and that's for the eight cubic yard. And then, we expanded into the four and six. So, if you look in that table, it'll say not currently available or not available. So, that's why I didn't put an old and a new, because we've determined that our rate covers our expenses for Saturday service, all of our expenses for Saturday service.
And that's assuming, though, we're doing Saturday service without overtime. And we believe that by reworking the schedules and changing, that you will be able to do that without a rate increase.
Dr. Woodruff, one change, we did include overtime.
We did include overtime.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We did include that in overtime.
Mr. Bitter has a question.
Just a comment, I noticed that one of the items is we're gonna continue preparing bid documents. And what I heard just Wally say about meeting with Mrs. Dodd, while that may sound fair on the service, on the surface, I have a problem with that because we should be transparent in dealing with all commercial haulers. And I think the proper way of doing it is to prepare bid documents, not to have a meeting with only one possible contractor.
Mr. Bitter, I believe that Ms. Dodd's comments were that she would be willing to honor the previous bid. We would have to, of course, work with the city attorney to determine if that is, in fact, something we could legally do. I certainly agree with you that any meeting with Ms. Dodd is fact-finding, is not negotiating.
Mr. Attorney, that is accurate, as far as having to?
I would certainly have to research that, Mayor. I would not be in a position to give you opinion tonight.
Just wanted to be clear, clear on it.
I doubt it.
Any other questions of Wally? While we have him here. Okay. Staff is seeking direction on this as far as approval of a proposed fee schedule amendment for commercial dumpster service.
Mayor Phillips, I make a motion to approve the proposed fee schedule amendment for commercial dumpster services presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, all?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mayor. I was thinking about it. I did have a question for the city attorney. So, we're, got before us a proposal for a twenty-six cent increase on the tipping fee. By my calculations, approximate, running the mills, from what we've seen, we actually, we, we're estimating a deficit for this service. Again, by my estimations, if we wanted to eliminate that deficit via a fee increase, it would probably be three dollars and twenty-six cents. Do we have the legal authority to raise it, the fee, to three dollars and thirty-six cents?
Yes, sir.
So, we?
You mean with us having been a bidder on the service?
I'm just saying that we have the authority to charge what it costs us.
Yes, sir.
Because it's an enterprise fund. But yet, we're not really charging what it costs us. Correct?
That's correct. Let me address that. When we looked at this, there is no question that in order for us to not, not break even this year, but simply to cover the cost that we are projecting, your rate would have to be between seven dollars and seventy-five cents and eight dollars. You know, although, Wally talked about doing the math backwards. I know those of you who are NC State fans, you didn't have any trouble with that, doing the math backwards. The rate that is proposed to you today is a short, is a short, I'm sorry, is a stop-gap measure that only brings you in line with the lowest bidder. It is not a rate that will put you in the black. Now, from our workshop on January the 20th, we felt that it was appropriate to try to honor as close as possible the low bid. And that's why the matter before you is six dollars, or for all practical purposes, the low bid of five dollars and ninety-nine cents. There is no question, if we are going to stay in this business, you will see another request from us to raise that rate to a rate that will cover your expenses as we are now seeing them. Obviously, one option that, that you could certainly take, which is a financially appropriate action, is to say to staff tonight, we are rejecting this. We are going to, if necessary, put it on the next agenda, and we're going to put it at the rate that will put us in the black for the rest of this year, not for the last six months. We're just talking about what's needed to carry us forward, and we can certainly do that. But this measure is simply, if I may use the term, to stop some of the bleeding. It puts us on a level playing field with what we would have charged if we had performed privatization to the customer. Because remember, the low bid was 5.66. This does not eliminate the over $200,000 deficit that this program has run. And Mr. Thomas is 100% correct there. All this rate does is take you and the customer to the same level of privatization based upon the bids. If you really want to get in the black or to eliminate as much as possible, the rate needs to be significantly larger, from our estimate, seven dollars and seventy-five cents, to eight dollars. We felt, I felt, as your manager, that it was not appropriate to recommend that at this time because it would put us where we weren't really, if you pardon the expression, competing with what the private sector told you. But Mr. Thomas is right. You're going to have to have a rate. If our expenses continue as we have shown you on January the 20th, those rates would have to be in the range of 7.75 to eight dollars per tip.
I'd just like to add one last thing, I guess, about this. I mean, I think everybody's clear about how I feel. But I do wanna say that one of the most unfair and frustrating things that can happen to someone is to be held accountable for that which you are not responsible. To be held accountable for something that you cannot change. I'm sure that's happened to all of us, career, you get in a position with a superior that you're called out. So, I can understand, I wanna say I can understand the frustration that probably was felt by our sanitation department when they would get calls and complaints, and they were not able to immediately rectify the complaint via using the vendor, which is some past history. I can understand that, that frustration, and I believe that frustration is probably augmented by the true concern that I know that our sanitation department has. And I wanna recognize that the great job they've done residentially that, you know, encouraged us to accept this challenge. So, while I can see both sides of it, I think it's important to take a clear look at it. There's, we've heard reports of improvements. I mean, I personally have heard the same amount of complaints about our department as I did about waste. Just about none. I mean, not that many, for me personally. And I know my trash is all at the landfill, just like it would've been if we had not changed the situation. I'm not really recommending that we change the rate. I just, I feel there is an unfairness to the rate itself because it's deceptive, it's not covering the cost. This is supposed to be an enterprise fund, and that's the way it's supposed to be. We were told this would not involve taxpayer money seven or eight months ago. We know that's not the case. But I'm gonna vote for this motion anyway.
I agree with you. I think it should be a purely user-driven fee.
Right. Well, that's what it is, supposed to be.
Supposed to be, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be supplemented.
Right.
Just like, well?
Right, residential.
Any other comments?
Well, I think, I think the right decisions have been made. I think the intent was there, and now that we find that we can't perform at the level that we've anticipated, and I think that's been brought forward. And bid documents are being prepared, and new proposals are being prepared. But in the meantime, I think we need to try to protect our citizenry in terms of the least amount of money out of their coffers to handle this situation. And I'm assuming that, once those documents are ready, they'll be brought forward for a decision to go out for bid or a possible privatization of it. Am I correct in saying that?
That is correct. It's?
It's our assumption, from the meeting that we had on January 20th, that you've already authorized us to proceed to prepare the documents, and then review with you several options that are in those documents. And just for example, one of the options will be, will we be in the billing and collecting business or not? Will we ask the vendor to pick up recycling, or will we keep recycling? We're showing you several options as we put together the bid documents. But it is our intention to have the bid documents in your hands very shortly, so that you can give us direction on the approach, and then we can get out to bid. One of the reasons why you need to do this is any vendor that is going to get into a competitive bid that's reasonable, has to have enough time to set in motion their equipment, personnel, their systems. So we'll be bringing that back to you very shortly. I believe that we will have that on your workshop of two weeks away. At the very latest, it will be your workshop in March, the first one in March.
So any bid or rebidding would probably begin with the fiscal year?
The bidding, the contract would begin on July the 1st, unless the vendor is willing to start earlier. The bidding process, I would hope to have out in March, for you to consider by late March or early April.
I have a question. As part of your bid document proposal, when will we be discussing whether we go out for privatization in total, and/or in part, meaning the billing portion of it? If we're going to go out, you know, maybe there are some of us that would think that if we're going to do that, that whatever company takes it on, they need to take it on in full, and not in part. Will we make that decision once the bid's come back, or prior to that?
Well, depending on our discussion theoretically on February the 17th, let's say that the bid documents are ready for us to review with you the 17th, I believe we can meet that schedule. We're already working on it, as Wally said. In the bid documents, we're going to show you several options for the way you want it to be bid. We can also structure the bids, so that we're asking bids on each option. So, for example, you could get a bid the same way you did on the previous package, and that is, that the service is provided by the vendor, but all billing and collecting is provided by the city. You can also get a second bid that says, no, everything in the way of billing and collecting and service is the responsibility of the vendor. There's a third wrinkle there, having to do with landfill cost. So our thought is that we will show you each of those options on either the 17th of February, or at the latest, the first meeting in March, and you will give us direction on either bid one, or bid multiple approaches.
When you're talking about the changes in the fee schedule for now, to finish this out for the rest of the year, you said this would stop the bleeding, or is an attempt to stop the bleeding. That's under the assumption that we keep bleeding at the rate we were doing for the last seven months, right?
Let me say it this way, it reduces the bleeding. If you want to stop the bleeding, you need to go to rates that are well in excess of $7. And we did not feel, I did not feel that that was appropriate, given the fact that we did go to competitive bid, and that competitive bid was the highest number I felt, if I'm going to use the term ethically, that I could recommend to you. I will also say to you that I accept full responsibility. I should have looked at the bidding process, I should have looked at the city documents better, I should have assumed some things that I did not, I should have addressed some things that I assumed would not happen. And I understand, I appreciate, you know, Councilmember Thomas's comments, we all worked in good faith. But I will also say to you, sometimes, good faith and good business practices don't work together and have the same result, and I accept that responsibility.
I don't think anybody's looking to attach any blame to anybody for doing anything. I mean, I think it was a noble effort, it was worthwhile, you know, it was a road worthwhile traveling down. But, you know, to clarify my question, my previous question, though, you know, I know that a lot of where we're at now, you know, behind the hate ball, is a result of some events, right?
Correct.
Assuming there are no more events, would this not make us better?
It will definitely, this will definitely make you better. It will increase your revenues by about $15,000 to $17,000. And what it will mean is that instead of being about a $250,000 subsidy, you're going to be more in the 220, 230, assuming everything continues bad. However, we do believe by restructuring the routes, we're going to be able to reduce overtime. Now, we also hope, and hope doesn't give us anything but hope, that if we continue to have the trucks run the way that they've been running the last several weeks, because we've now repaired them where they're in generally good shape, but if we continue to have all the bad news that we had, you are still looking with this rate increase at well over $200,000 deficit.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, sign a five, I say an aye. All opposed, motion carries. That brings us to our last section of public comment for the evening. Oh, I'm sorry, I've got a scribble in here, going back to item number seven, under the consent agenda, and this is the FY 14, 15 fee schedule amendment for planning permitting and inspection fees. Ryan?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we are proposing a fee schedule amendment to the planning and permitting fees. The first part is basically getting the planning fees to match that of the UDO terminology. And then the second part was pertaining to the building fees. Some of the biggest changes include requiring that the general contractor pay for all new construction permit fees, versus having the electrical and plumbing and mechanical contractors coming in and paying them separately, the, separating out the additions from that, and also increasing the minimum single trade permit fees. Residential's going from 6.5 to 75, and the commercial single trade permits are going from 100 to 120. We looked at the number of trips that the inspectors were making on these single trade permits, and we realized that there are more than a single trip in a lot of cases. So to cover the administration time, the additional trips on these single trade permits, we wanted to bump those up to more closely capture the amount of time that it takes to process and to do those inspections. Be happy to answer any specific questions that the mayor and council may have, as it relates to this proposal.
Can I make one additional comment before we open it up? One of the fee schedule changes was actually recommended to us by one of the mechanical contractors. Because as you get into large-scale buildings, there are various ways that you can heat, or cool, or plum a building. So we also looked at the issue, as Ryan said, of the reality that when the general contractor comes in and takes out a permit, he pays certain things, and then as the trades come in, they pay additional fees. It really, based upon our discussion with several of the general contractors, and we're really talking about commercial here, there seems to be an easier way to do it. And that is, we're going to calculate the fees in a lump sum from the general contractor, then when the individual subs come in, and we don't need to know who the subs are going to be at the time the general contractor gets their permit. Then when the subs come in, there's no question as to who is supposed to pay for what part. Can you address that a little further for me?
Sure. The, in a lot of cases, some of the contractors already do this anyhow, where Hunter Development, for example, that is residential, they know who their subs are, they bid, with their subs bid, knowing that the permit fees are already included in the permit fees. So with our calculation, our fee structure, you know, the contractor will pay for the full square footage on the permit to begin with. In some cases, they'll know who the subs are, in some cases, they will not. But administratively, on staff, it'll be a one-time go, if they know who the subs are. If not, the subs will come in subsequently, but they won't pay anything other than a $20 administration fee. So the total fee amount will be the same, it's just the general contractor will pay for it on the front end, versus having their subs pay it, and then the subs bill the general contractor back for the same amount of fees.
Any questions of Mr. King?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm the one who asked it be discussed. One of the things that I brought up with Ryan, Ryan and I had a conversation today, was the fuel piping being figured into a lump sum on the new construction, and that's not real, typically, new construction, commercial, doesn't always have fuel piping, and I wanted to make sure that it wasn't automatically charged when we didn't have any fuel piping. So I suggested to Ryan that that possibly be looked at as being able to adjust the fee downward by eight cents a square foot, if there's no fuel piping. And I'm assuming you're going to have some sort of language in here that would address that, or were you going to handle that at the time of application?
There's already language on the very bottom page, on page nine, the third paragraph up from the bottom, that allows us to look at the project site and consider if the fees, the 54 cent, is too high or too low, so if there's no fuel piping included, we certainly could cut out eight cent per square, if there's no fuel piping involved. Example came up this afternoon, where a hotel, a fuel piping permit came in, they are not using fuel piping throughout the entire hotel, so we came up with an alternative square footage ratio for fuel piping. Now, if that's going to be, that sentence is at the bottom of this part of the fee schedule. So in order to make that more apparent, I think that we would need to consider moving some language up to the front part of the fee schedule, just to make that more apparent to the contractors when they're looking at the fee schedule, to say, you know, hey, fuel piping is not included, or we need to specify that if the building doesn't have fuel piping, we will reduce the trade by eight cent. I think it never hurts to be more clear, if that's the direction we want to go in.
The other comment that I had was that the sprinkler is not part of this section, it's actually in the fire section, and I suggested that that needs to be brought over into this section, because otherwise, it's sometimes a surprise. If you're an out-of-town contractor, and you go to a new area, or you pull up your building fees, there's nothing addressed here sprinkler, you actually have to go to another portion of the fees. And I think it'd be nice if we could have some sort of reference back to that, and Ryan kind of agreed that that was more transparent, and I guess fair to the people who are bidding, because they're trying to put these monies in their bid. And then the other thing was that the technology fee, you know, that was a little bit surprised, but apparently, we've been charging, but we've been allowing some exceptions in the past, and I guess you're just clarifying, hey, there is no exceptions on the technology fee.
That's correct.
So, and that may be, you know, the technology fee might be assumed by somebody from out-of-town bidding, they may say, well, I've got telecommunications, and security, and audiovisual, and so forth, you know, is that technology? We tend to think of that as technology items. I know you're calling it a technology fee, but really, it's an administrative fee to cover the cost of the e-plan permitting and so forth, software that we've invested in. So again, maybe perhaps a little explanation on that would be good. Was there anything else you and I talked about? Wasn't that about it? Wouldn't that cover major hard-earned issues?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel, you're being asked to consider the fee schedule amendment.
I did have one other, I just thought of something, the fuel piping, I still think that's an excessive fee. Here I am, talking about decreasing revenues for the city, but that fuel piping, to me, is not a trade. It's called a trade here, but it really is not a trade in usage, in common usage in the construction industry. It's a item of work. You don't have to have a, your fuel piping licenses are handled under the plumbing or the HVAC, and so sometimes, I feel like our fuel piping charges can be excessive. You recall the discussion Randy Ramsey with Hobby Lobby and so forth? I'd almost rather see fuel piping go to some sort of a connection fee, if you will, per appliance, per water heater, or per the HVAC unit, or whatever, but that would be my recommendation. But something for you to look at. I think most municipalities do a, instead of a standard square footage for fuel piping, do a, based on a fixture count. I think if you do some research, I think you'd find that, I might be surprised, you might come back and say, no, that's not true, but.
There are some that do the per appliance.
And I typically see per appliance on that, and even plumbing sometimes, not always. Some places do the standard square footage charge for plumbing, some places do the per fixture, which is sometimes aggravating for us on the front end, trying to determine how much we're going to put in our bid for plumbing permit, but anyway. But I can live with this, if we make some changes, as we discuss, and if you'll look a little further into fuel piping, maybe a revision down, perhaps just look at it anyway.
Thank you.
I'm done, thank you.
Anybody? Again, being asked to consider the fee schedule amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve what's being recommended tonight, along with some clarifications that I think staff has said they have no issues with, so.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Very none, all in favor, sign a five, I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that brings us to our last section of public comment for the evening. I don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone that wishes to speak, that didn't get a chance to put their name on the list? Okay. All right, we'll go to our reports, and since you're already warmed up, I'm going to let you go ahead.
Proud to be here, thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just say congratulations to our missing council person. Some people learn, some people keep right on, I guess.
Education's a lifelong.
Thank you.
No report?
No report. How about that? No report. Walter Woodruff?
Two quick things. We'd like to inform the public and the mayor and council that this past Friday, we did have passport training for 11 of your city employees. Even the city attorney was able, you notice I said even, the city attorney was able to pass the exam, so he is also now an authorized passport application agent, acceptance agent. We do still have to finish the rest of the training, and finish the work with the Department of State out of Charleston. We anticipate that by probably now late February, maybe a little bit earlier, we will be able to open up to accept applications for passports, both here in City Hall by appointment, and at the Center for Public Safety on a walk-in basis. We will be advertising that as we get a little closer. You will also be very pleased to know that the work that the city staff, especially Michael Laquory and Anthony Prins, we have now had the DOT award bids, and the city awards some additional bids, and the medians that are out here on 17 should be under construction by late this month, or early March. Those will be the two medians, where Johnson comes into 17, and then the very long median, which is out generally in front of the filling station, where you have the fork in the road between 17 and Old Bridge Street. Beyond that, as always, Mayor and council, we thank you all for your leadership and what you're doing to bring this city forward. Thank you.
All right, entertain, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, sign a five, I say an aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
No report, man. Thank you.
All right. Entertaining, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by a say and aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.